Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I understand we have students in the House, and I'll call Grace Angus and her group up to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd like to come on up.
That's all for you.
Why don't you come right up, and you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? That would be a wonderful honor for us.
Next Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll have you back in a moment, so thank you for getting us started. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I would like the Board and the public to join us in a moment of silence. We lost two public servants recently, and the town is very sorry and very sad of the passing of Frank Rossi. Frank Rossi was our first Public Works Director for the town of Simsbury. He served from 1977 to 1995. During that time, he did many capital projects, including renovating this building, the Belden School, many roads, bridges. Every road you go over in Simsbury, your travel pass has Frank Rossi's fingerprints on it. The library, handicapped access for all buildings. He was a dedicated public servant, and we're sorry for his passing. We also lost Water Pollution Control Authority Commissioner Warren Coe this week, and we're very sad for his passing. Warren served the town of very dedicated, very hard-working commissioner from 2002 to 2013. And I'd ask you all to join me for a moment of silence as we celebrate the passing. Thank you very much. Our thoughts and prayers go out to both of their families. We would like to begin tonight, ask the Board's indulgence. We usually do appointments at the end of our meeting. However, the Police Commission will be meeting momentarily downstairs, and they are short one police commissioner. So they would like to remedy that and send him on his way. So they have asked that we accommodate them this evening by appointing James Fleming as a regular member of the Police Commission effective today, or January 8th, but it will be effective today. And the town clerk is waiting in the wings to swear Mr. Fleming in after the Board votes. So welcome, Mr. Fleming. Thank you for your service. I'd ask the Board to move that appointment.
I will move that appointment in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That appointment is effective. Congratulations. Now get downstairs. We'll move now to our first item on the agenda, and that's public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Board? Yes.
Don Coe, 26th and Congrave. Now that we are starting a new year, I would hope that this Board would have more accomplishments than last. First Electman Mary Glassman promised the electors a vote on Town Manager to give us professional management instead of any knee-jerk reactions to complicated issues. Simsbury has evolved, according to First Electman Mary Glassman, into a high-maintenance pseudo-Town Manager position with on-the-job training, leaving the position without any authority and no long-term planning. There was an invoice in Abigail's Restaurant for $49.48 and an invoice from First and Last Tavern Restaurant for $97.30. This Board would not be discussing the obstacles placed on the process with the skating center, hijacking the process with Big Y, since the town owns the infrastructure. Professional management staff would have envisioned these obstacles during the site-plan approval process, and shovels would be on the ground. Recently, the Zoning Commission voted to change the zone at 100 Driss Mill to a manufacturing facility for medical marijuana, with little discussion on the drastic change to the character of Simsbury. William Fisk and Vaughn Morosky voted against the application. Was anyone concerned that the facility is in close proximity to Simsbury High School and a large residential development? What were they smoking? Is this the only form of economic development Simsbury can entice to our town? What input does this Board have on the vote? By a show of hands, how many Board members have never smoked pot? Anybody raise their hand? Oh, good. Thank you. Okay. I just want to know, so we have an idea of your feelings for it. Okay. Marijuana is the first time you raised your hand on anything.
We didn't have an Otho office, so it didn't count anyway.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Marijuana is a mind-altering drug presently being sold to the town as a medical miracle. The vote is a gateway to changing from medical to recreational use. Does Simsbury want a bunch of potheads populating our town? According to Legal Match, I quote, "Each United States, United U.S. state also passes their own marijuana laws, but when these laws are in conflict with the federal rules, the federal rules control," end quote. Unlike many states, the federal law does not qualify possession by amount. Possession of any amount of marijuana, even single marijuana cigarette, is punishable by up to a year in jail and a fine of $1,000 on the first offense," end quote. Do the feds have to raid the establishment for compliance? It has been said that the increase in marijuana use will decrease the alcohol consumption, leaving vacant package stores and a reduction in town revenue. Is this part of the master plan for economic development? Will all the designated farms in town be given the authority to grow marijuana? Has this Board had any public dialogue with the residents of Simsbury for their input? Does this Board condone the zoning Board's vote for medical marijuana? Anyone convicted of possession of marijuana and other criminal offenses cannot get a pistol permit, according to state statute. During the processing of marijuana plants, are there any byproducts that impact the environment? The Board should demand that the State Consumer Protection Commission reject the application submitted by Kira Leaf LLC from a Greenwich Venture Capital Group. None of these dischurets or marketing studies that were submitted to the town at taxpayers' expense recommend medical marijuana to improve Simsbury's character and increase the tax base. The grant list was reduced from 2010 to 2011 by $260,907,557,000, according to town staff. Developing marijuana facilities is not the appropriate use for increasing revenues. I urge this Board to do everything in their power to remove this project from the state approval process. Recently, I was watching Bloomberg News, and they were interviewing a guest who processes beets for ice removal on roads. According to the speaker, beef pulp, brine, or beef juice blend can melt ice at 50 degrees below zero. It can be incorporated into the salt solution or sprayed on the roads. With beet brine or juice, you can reduce the amount of salt and improve the environment. The best application can be applied to the road prior to icing, the beet application. According to the speaker, the beets reduce the cost of ice removal by 60% to 80% as a spray and 30% with granules, since less salt is used in the application. This process is being used on the New York thruway and many of the highways throughout the country. The beets also remove rust from steel and tools used for the road removal process. I have contacted Public Works Department about this process and hope that this Board encourages the department to initiate the process as soon as possible. Growing beets and manufacturing its byproduct is certainly a better use of agricultural land than growing marijuana. I would like to report that the town has enforced some zoning violations and has collected $2,310 from Warner Nursery and has imposed a fine of $150 a day commencing on November 21st, 2013, on 730 Hop Meadow Street owned by Dave Richmond for, quote, "Construction of a ramp without benefit of a site plan," end quote. As of today, the ramp remains at 730 Hop Meadow Street. The ramp has been in place for years, and the fine for noncompliance continues. I hope that this will be the beginning of continued enforcement. Recently, First Electman Mary Glassman, Tom Cook of Administrative Services, and Shawn Kimble, Deputy Director of Administrative Services, went to conference in Boston, leaving the Selectmen's Office without an administrative staff. First Electman Glassman spent one day at the conference, but both Tom Cook and Shawn Kimble remained at the convention for three days, costing the taxpayers $889.14. There were additional charges of $76.95 for publications and $635 registration fees. How can an entire office leave to go to a convention? Why was this staff junket paid for by the taxpayers? There was an incident recently during Simsbury Celebrates where a student sent a text to another student threatening her with bodily harm. Texting has become a serious issue through the social media. I was told that Superintendent Matt Curtis was taking this issue seriously, and has alleged the student who sent the message was disciplined. Where was the leadership in the high school under the direction of Principal Mia Sullivan? Another parent recently came to Simsbury Police Department with texting at you.
Summarize, Mrs. Coe, because it's been five minutes.
Parents should explain, I have only three sentences. Parents should explain to their children that sending threatening messages is bullying and has serious consequences. I would recommend that parents and students see the movie Cyberbullying, which depicts the serious consequences of texting among students through the social media. Thank you very much, and I will post this on, it's www.simsbury.com and also on Simsbury Patch. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Want to make sure they get quiet.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. Before I start, Mary, you know, my wife and I, we drive throughout the town, and usually at just after twilight or when it's real dark on our way home, my wife always says to me, "How come these streets are so dark?" And I ask her to ask you, but she's very shy. But let me ask you, why don't we have streetlights on these ways? They're very, very dark, and everybody's running with their bright lights, which is against the law. And we're just asking for trouble, but we pay high taxes, and we don't have proper streetlights. But getting back to what I came here for this evening was, and I think I hit it right, was if you remember Lincoln, and that's what it's all about, right? Is who has precedence? And as far as the laws of the United States and the laws of Connecticut and the laws of Simsbury, the United States government, they have precedence. They're the final word. And for anybody here, young, old, or otherwise, that intends to start experimenting with this caballic marijuana, let me remind you that it's against the federal law to use it, to smoke it, to hold it, to sell it. And if you do it, you're going to get arrested by the feds, the Federals. And you may think, well, locally, they're going to look the other way, or you may think that the state's going to look the other way, or the governor is giving his condolences. It's against federal law, and if you do it, you're breaking the federal law. Now, having said that, I was coming here this evening to more or less to quote Mr. Lincoln, and it's apropos because he did his second inaugural during January. And the man was so foresighted, because even today, in the situation that we have with our friend Joan Coe, in his second inaugural speech, he said, "To care for him that bore the battle, and his widow, and his orphan." And here's a man that thought more of the widows and orphans than he did of himself. And we look at it today, and we look at our situation in Simsbury, and look at this Board and think, how much have you, as the serving members, the new members, you have your opportunity to improve it, but how much work have you done for the widows of Simsbury? How many laws do we have to help the widows of Simsbury? We have laws to help the performing arts. We have laws to help this group that's forming, Bobby Barinbaum in that group down in Greenwich, and Daniel, the fellow from Westport, the finance people, same people that are dealing in the hedge funds. These are the same people playing with the marijuana. And this going down with the zoning board, that was atrocious. To pass that law, and I don't know about you, Madam First Electman, but I don't want to be known to my friends when I'm introduced to people. This is Bob Kalishman and Joan Kalishman from Pot City. That's not my thing in life. But this is what we're looking at. We're looking at, we're trying to do it on West Street. Do you know how many yards that is from the high school? You have two offices down there that are engaging in this permit on the building that's owned by Ensign Bigford, I think. You have two offices. One's a property office, and the other's an office, the company. And incidentally, as far as the Secretary of State is concerned, State of Connecticut, they haven't, there's a portion of them that haven't bothered to do the paperwork since 2011. And they want the responsibility of dealing with marijuana and the other cabals, and they don't have the respect for the State of Connecticut. They've gone without licenses and permits since 2011. So getting back to Mr. Lincoln, it's apropos, in the sense that I notice on your agenda, we're going to discuss, we're planning the activities for Martin Luther King Memorial Day, which is to be held on the 20th of January at 2:00 p.m. at Christ Church. And let me put this out to you. We have a Civil War monument that's buried down here. It was buried for years, and now recently, they've trimmed the shrubbery and such around it, across from Abigail's, where very few people can see it. It sits up in the back. Don't you think we should move that monument down to the town hall grounds, where people can give it the proper respect? And where every year, whether we do it on April 15th, when we observe Lincoln in the Civil War, we could do the proper service to Mr. Lincoln?
If you could summarize, Mr. Kalishman. It's been five minutes.
Well, I like to, let me summarize it with this. Mr. Lincoln, object of ethical duty, and I think each and every Selectman here should look at themselves in a mirror and say, what is my ethical object of my duty to the people of Simsbury? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman. Anyone else who'd like to address the Board? Yes. Dominique.
My name is Dominique Avery. I come here as the new co-chair of the Simsbury Tourism Committee. I come to represent the committee, and I ask your indulgence to listen to a few comments from us. Tonight, you're reappointing members of all sorts of commissions and boards, and I see on the agenda that you've appointed two new tourism members, a Democrat and a Republican, and have not reappointed independent Stephen Mitchell. One of the new members is a Democrat, Kathy Barnard, and the other is a Republican, Sarah Ann Schultz. I'm delighted that you've made these two new appointments, and I look forward to working with them and meeting them. But I wanted to point out that we already had two people who were very interested in serving on the committee and have been coming to meetings for the past couple of months. One, Diane Phillips, is a founding member of The Bridge of Flowers, and the other, Charmaine Seavy, is a marketing professional with tourism experience. Unfortunately, they're both Democrats, and they didn't come through us through the party process. They came to us as volunteers, because they were looking for a way to use their expertise in a field they had an interest in, regardless of party. The Simsbury Tourism Committee has functioned as an ad hoc committee of the town for nearly two decades, with a mission, quote, "to help efforts to enhance the vitality and broadening of the economic base of Simsbury through the development and promotion of tourism." We are a dedicated group of volunteers who are involved because of our interest in various components of tourism in Simsbury. Bike trails, outdoor recreation on the river, Tarahiffle Gorge, the Flower Bridge, Simsbury Celebrates, Main Street, the farmer's market. Initially, member political affiliation was not questioned. However, somewhere along the way in the past two decades, this became part of the criteria. The membership of the committee had to reflect the makeup of the Board of Selectmen. We just wanted to point out, and there are several members of the Tourism Committee with me here, both Democrats and Republicans, that we feel that the Tourism Committee is in no way a stepping stone to a political career. It's simply a group of volunteers who are proud of their town and want to share that pride. The most successful members are those who have been interested in achieving the goals of the committee, not those who were simply selected to fill a slot. Until now, I never even knew who belonged to what party. The committee is made up of residents who want to give their time and energy to promoting the town, and we ask that in the future, you find a way to allow the Tourism Committee to continue its work with members who love the town, regardless of political party. Now, I understand that the Tourism Committee is an ad hoc committee, and membership is not firm. It's determined by the Board of Selectmen. So could that mean that the two people who have been serving unofficially could be appointed as well? I don't know. But in the meantime, I hope they will continue to work with us without being official members, because they have the enthusiasm and the experience we need. And we welcome your two new appointments, and I hope the failure to reappoint Stephen Mitchell was an oversight, although I think he may not mind, since he's terribly overcommitted anyway, although we would miss the connection to the bike trail. I have a lot more detail on the work of the Tourism Committee and what we've done this year and over the decades, but I will not take your time tonight. I will send it to you. If any of you are interested, I will send it to you by email. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Dominique. Just a question, if I might.
Sure.
I have not received any information from the Tourism Committee about other members that you'd like to appoint. Is that something that the Tourism Committee could send this Board?
Yeah, I could. I sent the name earlier this week to Sue Mazurski.
I didn't receive, Sue was retired, so maybe it got stuck in the cracks.
No, no, she was here, actually. She was here that day.
Yeah, we didn't get that, Dominique, to bring forward, but could we get a vote from the Tourism?
Sure. And I sort of had informal conversations with, trying to find out how appointments are made, because I'm a new chair, I didn't really understand through the town clerk, through the Democratic Party Committee with, in the Tourism Committee itself, and we couldn't figure out quite how to do it. And I didn't realize that it was going to be done till tonight, till earlier today.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, but if you could send that to us.
Sure, certainly, we'll do.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the Board? Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and to meet with all of you. I'm very passionate about what's happening with Aquarian Water Company, and I gave a...
Could you just have your name for the rep?
Oh, sorry. Barbara Dolinsky, 56th Library Lane. I gave a huge packet of material to Nancy Haas, because I know you recuse yourself, Marion, and I respect that. What I have found in some of my research is that several towns in Massachusetts have done feasibility studies to over $300,000 and also commenced with lawsuits against Aquarian to buy back their water companies, because they feel it can be better managed. 9% return on investment for Aquarian, and then McQuary Bank taking their cut makes it really not good for water rates. And so Aquarian has been buying up companies very aggressively in New York and New England, and then especially where we have cheap, plentiful, good-quality water that's not contaminated with asbestos and so forth, that needs minimal treatment. And so we're not being served very well, and I would urge the Board to look at buying, the feasibility of buying back the water company for our town. Hingham, Massachusetts is trying to do it. Oxford, Massachusetts is trying to do it. Bethel, Connecticut, just voted down Aquarian. They really are in for a power grab, and it's not in our economic interest to let them continue to gain in strength. Their ethics and their past behaviors have shown that they keep buying properties, buying aquifers, buying water companies, and increasing the liability of their infrastructure, but not actually addressing it, so that while we are assessed as ratepayers for infrastructure, so they don't care about that. They just care about profitability. That's why Aquarian, which originally was owned by Calda Group, was sold, because they were not profitable enough. I know that my Social Security increase of 1.5% changed CPI doesn't even cover cost of living. And the Attorney General, in his report during the hearings, was very scathing about the corporate responsibility of Aquarian, how they misrepresented their corporate packages. They are not subject to freedom of information. So we have no way of knowing how much someone like Charles Furlott makes, what his executive package is. We don't know what their long-term plans are. It's all in secret. They have no provisions for the widows and orphans, the lesser of us, as other utility companies do, like with the energy programs, the magic payment program with Northeast Utilities. So they're not very responsible corporate citizens. And I encourage, in finishing up, I'm just going to encourage the Board to take a very close look at what Massachusetts is doing. I think we even have enough for, to enter into a class-action lawsuit with some of the other communities. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Barbara, it is on our agenda for executive session, so the Board will be discussing those items tonight, so thank you.
Hingham, Massachusetts does executive session for the very reason that it's in a lawsuit and so forth.
It is.
And so does Oxford, Massachusetts. But I'm just saying, if you reach out to these people, they may be willing to share with you some of their information, and it's also in the packet that I gave Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Stupan Arzak, 119 East Sweet Talk Street. I have two issues to bring up. One is, I see on the agenda that they're going, you guys are going to approve the establishment of the Simsbury Economic Development Task Force, as recommended by the Economic Development Commission. Members to be identified based on the December 4th and December 10th memorandum, appointed by the Board of Selectmen within 30 days. One of the things that I noticed, you know, it might be a good idea to get some people on, but it seems like it's the same people that we've always talked to. So I kind of thought it would be interesting, since 80% of the residents pay the taxes, that perhaps we want to try to get some residents, since we have a lot of residents in town who have incredible backgrounds doing things. And so I think that even if you had a separate group or, you know, a part of this group, I mean, I think it would be great to be able to bring a bunch of professionals in who have a lot of good ideas, who haven't necessarily been tapped, and I know some of them, I can refer some names, but I just think that that's a good idea. And the second thing I want to talk about is our own little bridge gate that we have going on here. We have a drainage problem on my street that was created by Mike Payne and the Planning Commission. And while he was serving as Chair and said callously, "There is no drainage problem," and I provided the drainage information, and it was researched, there is a drainage problem. My neighbor, a town... My neighbor, a town planner who was regional planner in Martha's Vineyard and a planner in West Greenwich, Rhode Island, says there's a problem. In addition, one of the lots has sold. And if that lot does not put in drainage appropriately, it is going to be a problem, yet more of a problem. Right now, everything's icing up on the street, right where the school bus has come, and it really needs to be dealt with. I know it's going to cost the town money once a decision's made, and if it's made in error, it costs the town money. So I feel bad about that, but it has to be resolved because I, even though I don't have a basement, because my father, when he built the house that I so proudly live in because he built it, he built it without a basement because, you know, we're in a very, very wet area. We have a really high water table. But it can get underneath the foundation and ruin my house. So in all the time and pride I'm taking and, you know, taking over the house and wanting to be, you know, part of the, you know, living on the land that my father grew up on, that I grew up on, it bothers me that I was so callously dealt with. And I'm just angry about it because it's a personal thing. It has nothing to do with a discussion or a debate about an issue. It has to do with the fact that my house is being affected by this, along with my neighbor's house and my other neighbor's house. And my neighbor, who's a town planner, is, "What up with this? How could this possibly have gone on?" So if that could be dealt with, I would really appreciate it. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Okay. If not, I want to thank everyone for their input. We'll move to our regular meeting items at this point of the agenda. We have a special guest tonight. We have a presentation from Grace Angus of Simsbury High School. Grace, welcome, and I want you to introduce your committee and want to thank all the members of the Martin Luther King Committee. I know we have a special celebration of Martin Luther King Day on Monday, so why don't you all come on up and tell us a little bit about what you're planning for that celebration and the memorial project that you're working on? So, welcome.
Hi, I'm Grace Angus, and I'm one of the student co-chairs of the Martin Luther King Connecticut Project. I'm a senior at Simsbury High School.
I'm Kavya. I'm a junior at Simsbury High School.
I'm Taylor Willer. I'm a freshman at Fairfield University.
And I'm Maggie Willard, and I'm also a freshman at Fairfield University.
As you may or may not know, in 2011, some students at the high school got together and did a little research on a sort of urban legend in Simsbury that Martin Luther King spent some time here during a couple summers. Turns out, he spent two summers here in his youth picking tobacco. He lived in the barns out in Simsbury, and it was a very formative time in his life. And so to commemorate this time, we have decided to build a memorial in his honor and to honor the time he spent in Simsbury. So right here, we have a mock-up of what the memorial is going to look like, and so far, we're about, we have $60,000 of our $110,000 goal. And we're really close to finishing. We're hoping we can start construction early summer, late spring of this year. We're hoping the town can help us out a little bit and help us finish up our fundraising. And this is our memorial, so we're going to have a bench here that's going to have a quote from Martin Luther King, and we're going to have five glass panels that document his life, his legacy, and the time he spent in Simsbury. And all along the path, it's going to be paved by bricks that are donations from Simsbury Town people, small businesses, groups, all sorts of stuff. So we're really hoping to finish up our goal. We're really excited about the project, and we're so close, so we're hoping that we can finish up as soon as possible and start construction.
And you want to tell us a little bit about the program that you have set for Monday?
Yeah, sure. We're hoping to have, we're going to show them a documentary. We're going to have a couple songs performed by some high school choir groups. We're going to have a reading of one of Dr. King's speeches, and I think we're going to talk a little bit more about the project. We have a mock-up of one of the glass panels that you see here. I'm not sure if we're going to be bringing that, yes? So that'll be unveiled, so to speak. Anything else that I'm missing?
So if the public would like to come to that wonderful celebration, it's going to be Monday at 2:00 at First Church, and the public is welcome and invited to come?
Yeah.
Where is it?
First Church? Maybe you can talk about where the monument will go. That's a great question.
It's going to be in the corner, on the Historical Society. I think it's Hot Meadow and Phelps Road, I believe.
On the land owned by the Historical Society?
Yes.
Questions for the group?
Can you tell us a little bit about your fundraising activities in case anybody would like to donate or buy a brick or do something?
Yeah, of course. We're selling bricks on our website. We have order forms up there, and they're $100 each if you want to buy a brick. Bigger donations, there's a little bit more information on the website about that as well. We have donor levels, and depending on the level, they may or may not get all the plaques here and in other various places on Memorial. Oh, the website, sorry, I can't make you. It's www.mlknct.com. And there's, our documentary is up on the website as well, some press about us, more drawings of the memorial, so.
Excellent. Questions?
I just wanted to make a comment about your efforts, because I know you've been out at Simsbury Celebrates, and you've been really trying to get the word out, and I know you also had a recent feature that you all shared about, an article in Connecticut Magazine. So hopefully, all of those efforts will pay off, and you'll see your funds ever increasing, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. We'll look forward to seeing you at the celebration on Monday, and good luck with your efforts. Congratulations.
Well done.
We'll move on to First Selectmen's Report. I'm pleased to announce that the town recently received $204,000 in state bond funds for the design of a new senior community center at the State Bond Commission meeting last Friday. A special thanks to State Representative John Hampton for securing the funds with Governor Malloy and members of the Bond Commission. These funds will help us identify a site for our senior center. And I also want to thank our Simsbury seniors who traveled to Hartford to participate, and also members of the Board of Selectmen who were able to join me in attending the meeting on Friday in Hartford. Also wanted to report that we have, the town of Simsbury has filed the fiscal year 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It was successfully completed and submitted to OPM on December 30. We did not need to utilize the provisional extension that the town applied for back in November, so I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing us that extension, but we did not need it. I want to publicly thank Acting Finance Director Sean Kimball, who worked with his staff, Deb Sweeney, Rich Switzke, Dave Gardner, Colleen O'Connor, and Tom Cook, along with our auditors Vanessa Rosito and Bloom Shapiro, for their entire team for helping us get this project completed on time, so congratulations. Also want to announce some new faces around Town Hall. We have several key employees that have retired from the town last year, making, filling those spots very challenging. We were very fortunate to have such long, well-serving staff, including Town Engineer Rich Switzke, Water Pollution Control Superintendent Jim Clifton, and Sue Mazursky in the First Selectmen's Office. So while we wish Rich, Jim, and Sue all the best, we also look forward to welcoming our new employees. We have appointed Anthony Piazza as Water Pollution Control Superintendent. Anthony has just joined our staff from the Town of Bristol, where he had more than 10 years of experience as the chief plant operator in the Water Pollution Control Department. He began his career in the United States Navy in the Nuclear Engineering Division, and he started, already started with the Town of Simsbury on January 6. Joanne Martin will join us from the Town of Canton, where she most recently worked as Executive Assistant to the Chief Administrative Officer. Joanne has extensive experience as an office manager in municipal government, as well as a private sector experience over 30 years, and we look forward to greeting her on Thursday. And finally, Jeff Shea has been hired as our Town Engineer. He will join us also from the Town of Canton, and we've apologized to the Town of Canton for sharing some of their staff with us. We've also shared some of our staff with them, so it's very reciprocal. But Jeff was recently the town's project administrator. He provided capital project administration for the town and the Board of Education. He's a civil engineer. He has extensive experience in public works and city engineering. He worked for the City of Hartford Public Works Department, where he had various roles, and his first day of work will be on January 22. So we look forward to having a very experienced team in place to assist the Town of Simsbury residents. And finally, we have one more key position that we will be filling. We will be holding interviews for the Finance Director for the Town of Simsbury this week. We have some excellent candidates, and we're excited to find the right fit to bring on board to fill that very important role. So I wanted to update the public on that as well. We'll move now to approving tax refunds. Our town...
Excuse me, Mary. I need to recuse myself.
We'll note for the record that Mr. Payne is removing himself from the meeting. That means you're getting some money, Mr. Payne, that's what that means. So we have a total of $12,199 in tax refunds that will be returned. These have all been reviewed by our tax collector and have our overpayment of taxes and will be refunded upon the board's action tonight. Can I have a motion to accept?
Move that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Payne can come back and collect his money. We now have an update on Hartford Land Use... Thank you. They're dropping like flies here.
The door revolves.
Sorry, Mike, we said no.
The record will reflect that Selectman Havner is on our way out, and Selectman Payne is on his way in. I'm pleased to update the public on the Hartford Land Use Study Group. This is a special task force that this town instituted to work very closely with the Hartford developing and marketing their site. We had some very exciting updates I'll share with the public. The first is, the marketing materials are available to the public. The board has already received copies. Copies are available. As you can see, it's a very slick brochure that C.B. Richard Ellis has put together. It provides a lot of information about the town, some beautiful photographs of the site as well as the town, and includes a lot of detailed information about the Hartford site. And John McCormick, who is the Executive Vice President of C.B. Richard Ellis, was here at our meeting tonight and said that the marketing efforts are going very well, and they have two or three excellent prospects for the site. One is a 300,000-square-foot potential user, and the other is a 100,000-square-foot potential user. So we're really excited to be working with the Hartford on that as well. The committee also heard from the Permit Ombudsman from the DECD, Maya Loenberg. Maya gave a presentation about the role that DECD can play in assisting the town and the Hartford in the marketing of the site. They have also, are very interested in the town's proposal to have a certified site program. The town was aware of other places in the country that have a certified site selection program. Connecticut does not have such a program, and we contacted DECD to ask if Simsbury could be a pilot for the program for the state. And we were pleased that Maya attended our meeting tonight and said they are very interested. So the subcommittee did vote to pursue meeting with the DECD and having the Hartford be a certified site, which would serve as a pilot for the state of Connecticut, and we're really excited about that opportunity. The town will also be briefed on the Hartford's timeframe, and they'll be updating the subcommittee at Town Hall at 9:00 a.m. on January 21. We also have form-based code drafts that have been distributed to both committee members to review. They are available to the public, and we have shared those with the Hartford. We are waiting for the Hartford to review their draft and then report back any input to that code before we can formally present that to the commissions. Gateway Planning will return as part of their contract that the Hartford and the town have contracted to review the design code, to answer questions, to help with any potential developers that are interested in the code, and we'll be working on a date in February for that. Finally, the public and the board is invited to a breakfast that the Chamber of Commerce will be holding with the Hartford and the town on February 26 at 8:00 a.m. There's no cost to attend the breakfast, but you are asked to RSVP if you are going to attend. This is an opportunity to engage the Chamber and the town and the Hartford's efforts to market the facility, and also to reach out to any potential developers in Simsbury who may have not had a chance to go through the facility. So I don't know if there's any questions of the board? Happy to update the board?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll now move on to approving the workshop dates. I want to thank the board. We have, we're hard at work. We have a number of, it's that time of year where we're already hard at work on our budgets. We have copies, I think, Tom, did we distribute copies of the timeframe?
Copy's right here.
We have copies of the board for the budgetary timeframe under the charter. Our work has already begun. Staff is already hard at work preparing and reviewing their budget numbers. We are having discussions on a regular basis about what the goal of the town is to present to the Board of Selectmen. In order to notify the public, we just want to go through that the charter requires that the Town Department staff submit their budgets to the Finance Director and to my office by January 31. So we're in the process of working with staff to do that. The First Selectmen then must submit a budget to the Board of Selectmen by March 1. The Board of Education will present a budget to the Board of Finance and to the Board of Selectmen no later than March 15, but that meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 12. The Board of Selectmen will then present their budget to the Board of Finance on March 31, so mark your calendars for Tuesday, March 25, at which time the Board of Selectmen will attend the Board of Finance meeting. The Board of Finance will meet next week. They have not yet set a date for the public hearing or whether they will have one or two public hearings, so we'll report that to the public once the Board of Finance makes a decision. We've still not received a formal notification of a joint board meeting, but you should pencil in January 21, Tuesday, January 21 at 5:00 p.m. We understand that the Board of Finance will call a three-board meeting to discuss budget preliminary numbers at that time, but again, we have not yet got confirmation, but that is the latest time that I've been made aware of that the Board of Finance may invite us. So we'll be invited to that meeting as well. Depending on whether there's one hearing or two public hearings, the date of the referendum will have to be set by this board either April 29 or May 20. So it's too early to know. We'll be trying to get a date from the Board of Finance next week so that we can properly notify the public. Finally, while we're working on operating budgets, we're also simultaneously working on capital budgets. Our capital budget timeline is a little different under the charter. Those requests are not due to the First Selectmen's Office until February 15. We then have to present those capital improvement plans to the Board of Finance by Tuesday, March 25, and have a hearing no later than April 10. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on the budget timeline. Some of those dates have changed. Based on those charter decisions, we did send out a number of dates for budget workshops. I want to thank the board for getting back to us. We were managed to work through a few conflicts that some board members had and find that the dates that work best are Thursday, the 27th of February, and Friday, the 28th, with a Saturday workshop date of March 1. So if everybody's okay with that date, we, you'll notice that we are moving up the date of my submission to the Board of Selectmen by a couple dates to accommodate the Board of Selectmen. So we're going to be working hard to make sure we can do that, but those dates seem to work best for folks.
Quick question. I don't see the date on here, and I'm going from memory, but typically, the Board of Selectmen need to give the capital project budget to the Planning Commission for them to act on. I don't see that.
Yeah, that's, because that's not a charter recommendation.
Oh, it's not charter?
It's not. But it is a requirement, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll do that as part of the budget process, but it's not required by charter. These are the dates as required by the charter.
Okay.
So we have to fulfill that requirement before the deadline for the referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
What are the times for those meetings?
Well, we didn't set a time. We, in the past, some board members have indicated they would like to start at 5:00 and other board members have indicated they would like to start later at 6:00. So it's really, I thought I'd query the board this evening. We could start either at 5:00 or at 6:00. It's really, I'm here either time, so if folks want to check their calendar.
Been on traffic coming out of our...
I was going to say, you have the hardest to travel, so.
I'm the sum for 6:00, so I think you guys are the sum for 5:00, so.
5:30?
5:30.
5:30 sold.
That'd be beautiful.
The location of all these meetings?
We haven't set the location yet, because if these dates work for the board, we'll set the dates and the time based on the room availability. So we don't know yet, but we will post those and let the public know. I thought our purpose tonight was just to let the board and the public know that we've started the process, to start to put some... started the process, to start to put some dates on the calendar that folks should be aware of if they want to participate throughout the budget process. There's plenty of opportunities, plenty of meetings. The Board will be available many, many times, so the public will have many opportunities to comment. But if these dates... Just to review with the Board, Thursday, the 27th of February, the 28th of February, March 1st, and then if we need additional workshop dates, we've set March 7th, March 8th, March 10th, and March 11th.
I'm assuming the Saturday won't start at 5:30 in the evening?
We could, but probably...
A.m.
Probably start at 5:00.
Without us.
Saturday workshops might work well because folks who do work may not have an opportunity to come to our meeting, so there's a good opportunity for folks who worked during the week to hear some of our budget discussions as well. Okay. So, if those dates work, we'll go forward and set those special meetings with the rooms' availability as we move forward. Thank you very much. The next item is to...
Approve those?
We don't need to approve them. Just as long as everybody's comfortable, we'll just set those as special meeting. The next item is to approve a new program designed to promote Simsbury as a wedding destination. This is just fun. We're just... This is just a fun proposal. We had a staff meeting as we do and our town clerk was mentioning that our... The number of marriage licenses has gone up 200%. Can you believe it? 200 and...
218.
18% to be exact. And we thought that maybe there's an opportunity for Simsbury to highlight that it's such a great place to get married, that it's a great place to live, to raise a family, and I was thrilled that our town clerk met with Simsbury Main Street and also with... Who else did they meet with? Tourism. Thank you. They're sitting right there. Tourism Committee to kind of vent, you know, kind of vet this idea, to see if it was worth doing, if it was worth talking about. And thank you, Tourism, for your exciting suggestions. But Main Street and Tourism came up with a great package that they would be prepared to offer. That includes everything from, I think, the honeymoon suite at the Simsbury Inn, a free floral bouquet from Horns, and...
Makeup.
Makeup. Or a massage.
Or, yeah.
Or a massage. All designed. So, a very, very good value and a way of highlighting that this is a great place to for romance and for a place to get married. We did look at some of the options that we could offer. The cost to get married... Well, it's priceless, but the cost to the town of Simsbury to get married includes a $19 surcharge paid to the state of Connecticut for license fee and $11 of which goes to the Town's General Fund. We thought tonight if the Board were interested in helping promote this, that we would ask the town to waive the $11 deposited into the Town's General Fund, to only charge the fee that's required and is remit to the state of Connecticut. This way, the town wouldn't have to deduct any costs. If the Board was feeling particularly generous, we thought we would waive the fee completely, but that would require transfer of funds at the end of the year. We don't know how many people will take advantage of it. We thought we would cap it or offer for the first 25 or 50 couples. So, if the town's interested in pursuing this marketing opportunity in conjunction with the Tourism Committee and Main Street, if the town were to waive the town portion of the fee for the first 25 couples, the town would see a revenue loss of about $250. So, it's a very small price for...
In lieu of the fact that our licenses are up?
In lieu of the fact that our licenses are up, it probably wouldn't be a real loss, but would be the cost to market this idea.
Are we just talking about Valentine's Day or...
Just Valentine's Day.
Okay.
They don't all have to get married on Valentine's Day.
No. You have until April to get married.
Yes. Yep. Two-month window.
Now, there's possibility that no one is romantic enough to come and get a marriage license on February 14th, but we don't think that's going to happen. Yeah.
The idea behind waiving the entire fee is that we'd make it much more simple. If we do a press release that says, "We're not going to charge you the $11 that Simsbury pays," it's not going to be too sexy because we're going to have to explain that you're going to have to pay the 19 other dollars. So, that was the reason we said, "Do the whole thing."
Right. So, thank you.
You can't... I'm sure that people will be interested in the story and you can't pay for the marketing that you have with the romantic stories about coming to Simsbury.
Thank you. So, the suggestion from the town clerk working with Tourism is to waive the surcharge for 50 licenses and that would be $950. If the Board would like to reduce that to the first 25 couples, obviously, the cost exposure to the town would be much less. So, it's...
Mary, where would the funds come from if they waived the whole thing? How would we pay for that?
So...
We're aligned on a budget.
We're aligned on a budget and we'd have to identify funds at the end of the year to transfer. So, we haven't identified where those funds would come from, but they would be a transfer. If we just waived, again, the cost to come in from the town, so we didn't waive the state fee, we just waived the town fee, that would be a revenue loss, but as I said, the marriage licenses are up, so in reality, we wouldn't see a revenue loss in that line. And again, if the Board is, you know, trying to do something public relations-wise and yet bounds, you know, the cost, then we could limit the number of couples that we would provide this to. Questions? Sean?
So, in 2013, 35 couples in total for the whole year came in for a marriage license?
No.
That's just for the day?
Just on that day.
Just on the 14th.
So, I asked the town clerk, "What's our maximum exposure?"
Gotcha.
Because it was a fun idea, but what if, you know, 200 people come in and, you know, we wanted to be able to cap the revenue.
Well, let's keep this simple.
The 218%, was that...
That's over 2,000, going back to fiscal year 2008, 2009. There were 122 marriage licenses issued during that fiscal year. And in fiscal year 1213, there were 266. So, it's up a lot. I think it has a lot to do with Riverside and some of the other positive developments.
And, you know, I think it's just...
Riverside.
So, it's just...
Rolling Ghosts and Rottos.
Whole different day.
It doesn't set up for get married.
We found that there are more people getting married in Simsbury. We're finding, you know, our restaurants, our facilities are all up, but there's really no way of publicizing that and encouraging more people to look at Simsbury as a venue to get married and start their life together. So, I thought, congratulations to staff for coming up with a very simple, creative idea and working with our volunteers to sweeten the pot by providing some fun gifts of, you know, honeymoon suite and flowers and the massage or the hair. Any thoughts? Anyone want to...
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first 50 licenses on February 14th of 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Question, because I'm the newbie. I'm assuming that you're comfortable that we'll be able to make up the line item shortfall.
I am. I am comfortable. I mean, with the increases in license fees, our revenues are going to be up and at the end of the year. I mean, we're talking maximum exposure, probably $500. So, $600. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but I think we'll get a big bang for the buck. And, you know, hopefully, some people who hadn't thought about Simsbury as a place to get married will look at Simsbury as a place to come, to have a celebration, to maybe look at houses while they're here, have lunch, have dinner. I mean, it fits in exactly with what we're trying to be here and that's a wonderful place to live and work and play, so...
No. I'm not opposed to it.
No, I know you're not. I'm just saying. We think it's a short, a small enough amount with a big upside of publicity and just a fun thing that we think it's worth trying.
Okay.
I will be supporting this motion. Thank you for your initiative on this. But I do want to make the point that we should not get in the habit of voting for things that we haven't budgeted for, and that's not something we want to do on a regular basis. So, if this is something you want to continue, I hope that you will put it in your budget for next year, because I don't want to get in the habit of having people come.
Good point. We'll be starting our budgets officially and every idea sounds like a good idea.
And they all are good. But we have to prioritize, and that's what we do during the budget process.
We could report back that there was no one that took advantage of it.
Yeah. It's a big barometer to see what we have to...
Yeah, and then we'll know if this worked, and if it did, then we can look at some other unique public relations initiatives as well.
And the publicity for this is going to be done by who?
Main Street. We'll be doing a press release and working with the Tourism Committee and we'll be helping.
Because it's coming up soon?
Yes.
Mary?
Questions?
I have one other question. Maybe the Main Street could also work with the town to do some kind of email blast or something. You've got to get a lot of emails that we have.
We will. And if you know any romantic folks who need a push...
You're talking to the wrong guy, but I'll do the best I can.
That's too much information.
No, I just wanted to say, Main Street and just only having firsthand discussions with them are extremely excited about this, not just for this year, but also planning ahead for next year. And my question about the increase in licenses is that if we planned in our budget process for a certain amount, you know, hopefully, there'll be a lot of happy people out there that are going to continue to increase that percentage and we'll be able to cover it. Even with some increased excitement about it, maybe get some sponsors to help as well, so...
And this was a short turnaround time, so thanks for Tourism and Main Street for stepping up with town staffs. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are romantic. Thank you. Next item is to approve the use of Iron Horse Boulevard for the 2014 WAC MS event on April 6th, 2014, and this will be subject to the regular public gathering permit process.
Move that.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is to approve a financial donation from Gurity Asphalt Reclaiming with our thanks for this generous support of $5,000 for the Keith Simsbury War program. It's a very difficult time for many people in our own community and donations such as this donation go a long way in making sure that our residents get taken care of, our most vulnerable residents get taken care of. So, I'd like a motion to accept with our thanks.
We'll make that motion to accept with our thanks.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you so much. Our next item is to accept a financial donation from the Interfaith Thanksgiving Service in the amount of $1,400 to be used by Social Services Department to assist families in Simsbury. If we haven't said it before, just a public thanks to our members of our clergy association. We're very blessed, is the word really, to have such a strong involved clergy association that works closely with the town and a number of issues ranging from the needs in our social service departments and many other social needs and other needs as well. So, the Interfaith Thanksgiving Service had more than, I think there were more than 400 people who attended, so if you haven't had a chance to go, it's a wonderful celebration. So, if I could have a motion to accept with our thanks.
So, move with our thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is an update of Big Y and the skating center. If you recall, the Board has asked that we have this on our agenda several times to ask what the status of the easements were. Pleased to report that we had tried to work with both parties to come up with an agreement. Those agreements, discussions seemed to have stalled. We then asked Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo for any other tools that the town might have to bring forth the public's interest in seeing the development in that area move forward. So, what you have in your packet tonight was a letter that was prepared by Bob recommending that the town could follow some other tools to have the road declared a public road, which would allow the town to control the development in the north end. That would be a public taking process and those steps are outlined in your packets tonight. We did start to have discussions about what the necessary referrals for a public taking would be. We shared that with both parties and I'm pleased to report that they responded by submitting an agreement for settlement discussion. So, I think that is certainly in the best interest of the town to have the parties work out the details, but in the event that the parties could not work out the process, we wanted to be sure that the interest of the public was protected and we did find an option that the town could use. And Bob DiCrescenzo is here this evening, our Town Council. Welcome, Bob. And Bob can walk you through the negotiations on the proposed agreement regarding reciprocal easements. We did receive... The draft that the Board did receive in their packets had one item that we were concerned about, that's Section 8, which had possible land use restrictions. Bob communicated that to the parties and we do have a revised... We just got today a revised one, which has no change other than to remove Number 8.
Remove it completely?
Right.
Yeah.
So, I will pass out copies. So, if the public, the documents that the public has available, if you just remove Number 8, you're left with the same items that we have. So, welcome, Bob.
Thank you. This... I received the first version of this agreement regarding reciprocal easements and what was called, and land use restrictions around noon on Friday. And once I received it, I had to revise the letter regarding the availability of condemnation if the parties couldn't work out an agreement. And I did that and I sent it in the form that you have before you. I read through it once I received it and I called the attorney who prepared it for Big Y and I gave him my opinion, which was only my opinion, that the land use restriction probably would not be very well received by the Board of Selectmen in that land use restrictions on public land are generally not favored by towns and probably not a good idea. He said he talked to his client a few hours later. They agreed, I think wisely, to just delete the entire concept of a land use restriction. So, what you have before you is essentially what this Board agreed to support in August, which is a reciprocal easement agreement between Big Y, the town, and the skating center for the expanded easement rights necessary for Big Y to have access to this, what we're all calling skating center driveway. And also in this document is a reference to a future easement in favor of the town and skating center on the south end of the Big Y development to allow the skating center property to have a driveway onto the signalized intersection, new signalized intersection for Big Y. And that, to me, is a very significant improvement for the town's land because then you would have two ways in and out of the skating center property through a signalized intersection, which will be required by what I call the State Traffic Commission. It's, you know, not called that anymore, but access to and from that site will have to be through, for an expansion of this skating center facility, will have to be through a signalized intersection. So, the draft you have in front of you, I think, is a pretty good deal for both the town, the skating center, and Big Y. In talking to their council late this afternoon, the skating center attorney still is looking at it and has not yet given his consent for the skating center to sign it. So, what I would suggest you do is discuss it. If you feel it's something you can support in its final form, you know, say that on the record and I would communicate that back and hopefully by the 27th, your next meeting, all the details will be ironed out and at that time, you could give it final consideration. I've always said it makes most sense for you to consider a document that the other two parties have signed and you being the last since you're the landowner. And that's what I would recommend. But I do think this is a positive step forward. I would recommend you hold off on beginning the eminent domain process. I think it's wise on all fronts to allow private parties to work out arrangements like this and have the town consent to them. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for all your hard work and our staff. And, you know, we've been talking since this Board voted in August for a final approval and all that was left was for the two parties to come to agreement. It looked like it was going to happen and so the Board was patient and the town was patient, but when it looked like it wasn't going to happen, we started looking at some other options and I'm pleased that the parties have come to some agreement.
Yeah, and I referenced it in the letter. What really would be, it would be to create a public right of easement, which is essentially what the legal term is for public road. And you would be condemning the lessees' right to exclude others essentially across the skating center driveway. And interestingly, there is a condemnation provision in the ground lease, and I think both parties would be bound by that. And the condemnation provision in the ground lease states that the lessor and lessee shall split the condemnation proceeds equally, or words to that effect. So essentially, you would discount it by the ground lessor's interest. So anyway, but that's for another day, I think, and hopefully that, the town won't have to exercise that right. And hopefully on January 27th, there'll be two parties signed on to this, and you could consider whether or not to approve it at that time.
Any questions? Lisa?
Thank you for your legal advice to Big Y about section eight. I was prepared to vote against this when I saw that.
Yeah.
And that would have actually been my inclination, but with the new addition, I would like to express for the record that this is much more favorable, and I would be inclined to, if this ended up being the final document, because it's not. I obviously agree with you that we should not vote on it until the parties have reached their final conclusion, but I am pleased with the progress that has been made and with the elimination of section eight.
Other questions of the board?
The lease for the skating center, when does that expire? Be renegotiated? What is the?
The initial term expires in 2019. Recently, the Board of Selectmen agreed to extend the lease because there was a photovoltaic array that's been placed on the building to help offset the electrical cost, and we wanted the lease term to be at least as long as the finance agreement for that, so the town wouldn't have to inherit that. And I believe it goes 25 years now beyond the initial term.
Okay, so there's no chance of this?
So there's a long period of time.
Okay.
Which I explained to Big Y's attorney that there already is a use restriction on that land in that, under the lease, the only thing that land can be put to use for is the skating center. That's it. I mean, there can't be anything else but the skating center there.
Right. Well, thank you. I would agree with Selectman Hevner that when I saw that clause, I was inclined to...
I think we all had the same reaction.
We had it in the letter on the front of all the information. It was not what we want. But this is very favorable progress, so I'm happy to see it.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you, Bob. I think this meets the intent of the state of Connecticut, Route 10 corridor study, the Department of Transportation, what the intent of the land use commissions were. Obviously, this board doesn't set as a land use board, so we can't vote on specific projects, but our role is only to facilitate the...
Right. If you were to approve this, you would be taking an action that would advance the action of the zoning commission in approving the site plan.
So this is consistent with the action that the other boards have taken already?
The land use boards, yes.
So this is great. Can I have a motion to endorse the proposed agreement with final details to be presented back to the Board of Selectmen for approval? That would be helpful for Board to have that.
I am not prepared to do that at this point because we don't have the final agreement.
No, I'm just endorse the concept of the agreement between Big Y and then have them come back with the final discussion. I just want something on the record that Bob can take back to the party saying, "We endorse the concept, and now we'll wait for the final details."
Yeah, I think that works. I mean, you wouldn't be authorizing execution of it. Has to come back here in final form, hopefully on the 27th.
My only reservation with that would be to make sure that the parties could still make changes if those parties have...
We wouldn't be endorsing the proposal. We would be just endorsing the concept. The point is, I just wanted to put on the record that we encourage the parties to come back. If the board wants to do it without a formal vote, that's fine, too. I just think we would like the minutes to reflect that we would have to pursue this in eminent domain.
I just wouldn't want to impede their progress in any way.
It wouldn't, but...
By saying that we endorsed what's exactly what's...
That was not the suggestion.
I'll make that motion.
The motion is to endorse the concept of an agreement to come back to the Board of Selectmen between Big Y and International Selectmen.
Yeah, I think that's fine. There's a number of changes that need to be made, and I've already highlighted a few that we need to discuss further, but the concept is consistent with...
Nothing happens unless we vote on it formally, and the first selectman signs it.
Until we authorize the first selectman to sign it, it's not going anywhere.
Right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you. Just for the record, if the, we'll have this back on our agenda at our next meeting, if for some reason this entire deal falls through, we'll have that back on our agenda as well. So the public and the board will know. Either we'll have a final agreement ready to execute, or we'll have the option that Bob has set forth as a possible alternative. Board comfortable with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Very exciting. Next item is just an update. While Jim Clifton has left us, his good work hasn't. He was awarded the 2013 Regional EPA Waste Water Treatment Plant Operator Excellence Award, and we will find him in Florida and thank him again. But he leaves the department in very good hands, has left a very good department for the next superintendent. We wanted to publicly thank Jim for his service. Next, we'll move on to appointments. We have not received a memo from EDC, but Mrs. Hasi has recommended that the EDC did endorse the Economic Development Task Force that would report to the Economic Development Commission. We, you could just restate the members of that board to start with, and then how are we going to fill the other members?
Yeah. I think pointing out in here and speaking of the membership, and Ms. Bernardzic's comments were very appropriate. The creation of this committee was to include skill sets that we don't currently have on our boards, folks in the real estate and development communities, folks with some marketing skills. So we certainly want to reach out and identify who those folks are and have them become part of the process. And the makeup of it was such that I know Hiram had some feedback to my initial submission about who he wanted to include as well, so I thought he and I could work through that, and we'd come back to the full board with exactly how that membership would come together. So suggesting originally two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Economic Development Commission, a member from the Zoning Commission. And then he also had some thoughts around the planning commissioner, Board of Finance. And I go back to Sue's comments. I don't want to see us make this really board-heavy, as much as I'd really like to see it be made up of some volunteers and skills that could really help the town save money as it tries to move forward implementing a lot of the things that have been put out there. And I appreciate the board's feedback that I got initially on referring it to the Economic Development Commission. I attended that meeting, Lisa. You were there. I thought it was really healthy, positive discussion. It was unanimously, as it's indicated in this summary of submission, endorsed by them to form it and, you know, will work through the commission to report out. And they also added the thought to include in its scope of work analyzing the role of an economic development coordinator. And sort of looking back, we have some history as a town and some successes with having had that position, but some other sort of takeaways and learned moments from that, so we can work through our asset of having the street partnership and some of the roles that Hiram takes on in that regard, and really whittle through how we might make a recommendation in the long term for us, which I think also speaks to, as we're talking about the budget time of year, the budget process. So what I'm looking to do is to approve the establishment of the task force and, as recommended by the Economic Development Commission. And as I said, we'll come back and we'll talk about the makeup of the board. There was some expression about Hiram chairing that, and this is an idea that I'm pretty passionate about, so I'm happy to do that if that's what ends up coming out of this. But I'm more than happy to work through that, as I said, before we come back to the board and talk through all that.
Thank you, Nancy. I think, why don't we suggest, I would suggest that Nancy and Lisa as liaison to the Economic Development Commission work with town staff to put a, traditionally, we put an ad in the paper asking folks who want to serve. We've done that with Technology Committee, and then report back. I think we could do that in a very quick timeframe. We've had a success in doing that in the past. So we would be ready as soon as Lisa and Nancy were to come up with a formal recommendation for the board, ready to vote on that. So, you know, if the boards wants to vote tonight, I would suggest that we appoint Lisa and Nancy to work on filling the names of the recommendation with staff and reporting back to the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Two comments. Thank you for your initiative, Nancy. I want to just mention that there was at least one member of the EDC who did not think it was appropriate to have Hiram chair it. And that's been my position as well, that it should be an appointed official. But the second thing I want to point out, my concern last time when I raised it, is that we do have the Economic Development Committee whose primary charge is to look at economic development issues for the town. That's what they've been charged with. That's their job. That's why we have them. And so I thought it was great that the EDC, the recommendation, Nancy accepted it, that it report to the EDC as the primary board established for looking at economic development. So to me, that satisfies the concern I raised the last time, because I don't, I think it's very important that we not diminish the roles of boards that are already established, that we need to give them the respect, because they give up their time. And I didn't want to diminish that role in any way. And so now it's, the task force will be recording to the board that is assigned primarily to deal with economic development issues, and so that satisfies the concern I have.
And members of the Economic Development Commission are on the Hartford Land Use Study Task Force as well, so it's the same people at the table for both. So we want to make sure that there's not duplication and that there's overlap, because the economic development incentives, working with the state, all those things, those folks are already at the table looking at those. So I think with the Economic Development Commission coordinating, we can make sure that we're not duplicating. So we'll come back with representatives. It would be helpful to also have a mission and a timeframe, so that we'll have a sense of when the reporting...
Yeah. That'd be great.
I think some of that discussion will take place, too, when we get down to getting the group together, but overall, we've outlined some of those things, so we'll share it.
Great. And I do, I do think that the comments in the public, in the public comments about having at-large members of the public involved is something that I would support and look for in the appointments as well. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is to appoint, just aging, we thought it would be better if we went through each commission rather than going back and forth through nominees. So I'd ask for a motion to appoint Diana Yisley and Arlene's Appeal, Victor Bible and Mary Lou Patrina to the Aging and Disability Commission.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a correction, actually, in our agenda, Arlene's, A-R-L-E-N-E. It's actually correct in the other information, but just to...
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to appoint Steve Antonio and Samuel Ziplo, Joanne Hogan to the Building Code Board of Appeals. And their terms and positions are outlined in the memos to the town clerk. I'm not going to read those.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Clean Energy Task Force to appoint Robert Beinsteine, Patrick Bochens, James Ray, Melissa Valentin, and Susan Van Cleef to the Clean Energy Task Force.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Conservation Commission to accept the resignation of Alan Needham as a regular member of Conservation Commission, to appoint Don Rieger as a regular member of the Conservation Commission, to appoint Margaret Sexton to the Conservation Commission, to appoint James Morrison as an alternate of the Conservation Commission.
Move that.
And to appoint, I'm sorry, to appoint Bert Kaplan and Marjorie Winters as regular members of the Conservation Commission.
Move that.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
To, for Culture Parks and Rec Commission to appoint Frank Salz and Bill Mullen to the Culture Parks and Rec Commission, as well as David Bush, Kelly Kearney, Sarah Kramer, and Jerry Wetchen as regular members of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll move that. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To appoint Mark Demming, Jay DeVivo, Carolyn Bly as regular members of the Economic Development Commission.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To appoint Helen Peterson, Judy Schaefer, Madeline Gilkey, and David Richman to the Fair Rent Commission, and to appoint Connie Mason and John Paddock to the Fair Rent Commission.
I'll move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To appoint Diane Mead to the Historic District Commission, and to appoint Mark Nyquist to the Historic District Commission.
I had a question on that.
Lisa?
And I don't see it here. So there was italics in one of our others. Why am I missing this? This is attached to here.
Diane's replacing, is filling in for the vacancy.
Right.
Rita, I believe.
So there's one position remaining, one vacancy remaining.
Right, there is. Yes.
And that's Republican vacancy.
As it stands now, yes.
So I'm glad to see this, just to, I know it's hard to find people, so this, the vacancies that we're filling has been around since July, I think. So it's good that we're filling. I think we should try to fill these vacancies as soon as we can.
Yeah, well, that's why Mead's going in and Nyquist are going in.
That's helpful.
But there is italics on the submission.
There is. So there is, so I guess the vacancy as it currently stands is a Republican vacancy. Is that a, an open seat, or does that need to be filled by a Republican?
What it says in the italics, which is different than what I have attached to the agenda, so I don't know if that was updated, it says Diane Mead's term expired 1/1/2014. Rather than being reappointed to her current seat, she was instead appointed to a seat vacated by David Triatas. I hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Yeah, that's correct.
It is proposed that the expiring Republican seat on the Historic District Commission, previously held by Ms. Mead, be filled by a Democrat?
Yes, that is correct.
But I don't think that can be, because if it's a vacant...
It can be. That's why we're doing it that way, because if we put Diane back in her term, then you can't fill a Republican seat with a Democrat. By putting Diane in the Republican-vacated seat, the other term has since expired, therefore you can.
Okay, so it is expired.
So we can.
My question is, I don't think that that was agreed to by the parties. According to our nomination, some of my recommendations, we keep that a Republican seat for now, and if you guys need help filling it, we'd absolutely be willing to assist.
My understanding was there was two candidates that you folks had, and you only had one spot, and, because Amy did reach out to us previously.
We have our...
Good. Well, I have, there was a phone call from Amy, so...
So I think what we would do, that, since that appointment doesn't need to be filled tonight, we would just move to fill the vacancies that we have before us.
Our concern was we didn't want to lock it down to a term.
I understand.
Because that limits our options.
So why don't we, we obviously have the same goals of filling vacancies with as quickly as possible, and I just urge the party chairs, again, to try to fill them as quickly as possible. It does create a problem. I know it did create a problem with the Historic District to have some quorum problems. So just remind the chairs to fill those vacancies as soon as possible.
And again, that's why we did it this way, was to try to get us as much flexibility going forward.
Yep, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And why don't we, why don't we not, we can't, obviously... Not acting on the vacancy remaining, and then there's time for discussion.
That term has expired, so...
Yeah. So with respect to the appointments before us tonight, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
And then, all in favor?
Aye.
An insurance committee to appoint Nick Mason and Peter Peterson, Madeline Gilkey, Paul Mickelson, and Ed Sparkowski to the insurance committee. We have a motion.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to appoint Rob Pomeroy, Marjorie Winters to the Open Space Committee, and Helen Peterson as the at-large Open Space Committee member.
I'll move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Planning Commission to appoint Ron LaCondro as an alternate on the Planning Commission.
I'll move that. Second.
Motion by Selectman Cook, second by Mr. Payne. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Public Building Committee to appoint Richard Durr, Larry Boardman, Richard Cortez, Michael Lareno, and Richard Ostop as regular members of the Public Building Committee.
Move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Recycling Committee to appoint Nancy Toma, Mary Turner, Carol Miller, Kingsbury Chase, Lori Fernand, and Janice Kern.
Question.
Point of order.
One of those terms I don't think was up right now.[1640.47]
Durr's term isn't up now. It's Mr. Kelly's term is up.
Mr. Kelly.
Almost positive it's Durr.
Clarification.
That's what we got from the town clerk, I believe.
The list I'm looking at from the town clerk says Richard Durr's term is up.
And about Mr. Kelly's term? Is that not up?
And Kelly is up 1/16.
Everybody's good? Okay. Can I move to recycling? To appoint Nancy Toma, Mary Turner, Carol Miller, Kingsbury Chase, Lori Fernand, and Janice Kern to the Recycling Committee?
Move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To appoint Tony Braz, Dennis Phelan, Linda Johnson, David Dell, Kevin Schultz, Ronald Patterson, and Jerry Post to the Simsbury Farms Complex Committee. I missed one.
We skipped one, yeah.
But can we do that one?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Because I read it already. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To be appointed to the senior... I don't believe this is a complete committee, so I'd ask that we table that. That only has the... It doesn't have the recommendations from town staff for the other members, so I'd hate to appoint half a committee if the board indulges to allow the committee to continue as is until we can get the full committee reported back. Thank you.
So we would need a motion just to continue their terms?
Whoever's serving...
Until the next meeting?
Yes.
Just to... They can meet just in case.
Yeah.
I move that we continue their terms until the next Board of Selectment meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll have that back on our next agenda just to complete, because a lot of those folks are just members of Aging and Disability Commission, and we'll report back to Public Committee. The next item is the Tourism Committee. I did want to comment on the comments made by Dominique Avery. If there are members... This doesn't... This is an ad hoc committee that sits at the will of the Board of Selectmen. It doesn't have a... It's not a charter commission, so it doesn't have a limit as to how many can serve. If there are... I have no problem moving forward tonight with these nominees, however, if there are additional members that the Tourism Committee would like to put on, I would suggest that we entertain that at our next meeting. I think there's certainly no limit as to how many good people can work to promote the town, and I'd hate to say no to anyone, whether they're a Democrat and independent or a Republican, to serve if they want to serve. So I have no problem moving forward this tonight, but I'd ask the board to consider other nominees that may come forward from the Tourism Committee. Comfortable?
Mayor, could we make a motion to actually let them appoint new members? I think there are three, or do you prefer that it comes to the board?
It has to come to the board.
It has to come to the board, and I just want to make sure that we receive a letter because I want to make sure that the people that they want to serve actually are willing to serve. So I prefer that it come from the committee itself.
And the charter requires that we're the ones...
Chair will recognize Mr. Needham.
Does that pay attention to the minority?
I know. That's why I think we shouldn't act tonight, because I want to make sure that we're in compliance with state law. But I do appreciate their passion and willingness to add new members with proper skills.
Sure we can find a way to make it work.
So the motion would be to appoint Dominique Avery, Pat Carbone, Paulette Clark, Lori Matzik, Barbara O'Connor, Kathy Barnard, Angela Campetti, Joyce Howard, Catherine Oaks, and Sariann Schultz to the Tourism Committee with our thanks.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Almost done. So to appoint to the Water Pollution Control Authority, Michael Park and Jay Sheehan, Phil Richardson, and Tom Hickey?
I'll move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To appoint Michael Doyle to the Zoning Commission as an alternate?
Move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That completes our nominee. Next item is to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 9.
I'll move those.
A motion?
Second.
Any corrections? Changes?
I have one.
Lisa.
On page... I see that there it lays a 1/2. Page five, reappoint the Technology Task Force. It has in the minutes, reappoint until January 2014. Because that is a board appointed by the Board of Selectmen and not by the parties, we had actually appointed them fully.
We appointed them till... Yes, we appointed them for two years.
Yes. Co-terminals.
They would be sunsetting today if we appointed them.
Right. So which is...
That's tight for...
That's just a correction. So 2014.
Good touch.
Yeah, two-year.
Two-year terms. Thank you for that correction. Any other corrections? Please, Nancy.
Under public audience, second paragraph, end of the first... Sorry, end of the first line, second paragraph, public audience, spelling of the word caucus.
Yep.
And then on... Let's see. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Page 6.
Correct.
Approve Democrat-Republican nominations. We just did that, so I think this was a motion to extend those approvals to this meeting. Yes, I think that was right.
Where is that?
So B, yes. Appointments and resignations under B.
Yeah, to various boards and commissions to January 2014.
Yes, it shouldn't be approved. It should be to move.
Move nominations to January. Yes.
Correct. Thank you. Any other corrections? Changes? All in favor with those changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Liaison reports. Personnel.
Yes. We met the CTV. We... I had requested Mr. Cook to move our meetings somewhere other than the main meeting that the SC TV could set up before because we constantly are running up against them, so I thank Mr. Cook for doing that and allowing SC TV to set up. We appreciate that. We... Before us was the possible consideration of proposed market reference range salary adjustments of the Director of Public Works. The Board of... The Personnel Subcommittee did vote unanimously to increase the salary of the Director of Public Works from $106,600 to $116,000, which would put the salary at 80% of the market reference range for the position. As you know, when we look at salaries of all town unaffiliated, we do a market reference analysis, so we want to make sure that we're paying our employees competitively, that we're not overpaying them and we're not underpaying them. So this is consistent with our market reference.